I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Middleborough to order. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Weekly meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Middleborough, we're being taped by MCAM and broadcast over Verizon and Comcast. My name's Alan Farley, I'm the Vice Chair. Due to a late change in the lineup, I'll be Chair on the meeting this evening. And, does anyone on the Board have anything under unanticipated? No? I have a, actually, I have a letter here from Senator Pacheco. It's not in correspondence, we just received it today, but it's, Senator Pacheco got a letter from Mass DOT regarding the Middleborough Rotary Project and the pending approved design of the McMahon Design for the Rotary, which we're pretty happy about. Thank you Senator Pacheco, for all your help and all your work towards that end. And I'm not going to read the whole letter, but it's very good and very important to have a letter from Mass DOT, from Secretary Davies to Senator Pacheco, because now we have something on paper that we can actually hold them to it. Over the years, we've heard a number of times that something was going to happen, we were going to get money for engineering. I was, I think Charlie was with us, I was at a meeting at the State House, where we were told that we misunderstood what we had been told beforehand. So now with this letter from Secretary Davies to Senator Pacheco, we actually have something on paper that we can say, you know, "This is what you told us, this is what you wrote." So this, this actually goes a long way to ensuring that we do move forward with that project. So I appreciate Senator Pacheco's office for, again, all his help for that and the letter, because it does mean quite a bit to us. So, that's that. Anyone from the public have anything under unanticipated?
Good evening, I'm Allison Ferreira, Town Clerk in the Town of Middleborough. I just wanted to bring to your attention, there was an inaccurate article written in The Enterprise on January 18th regarding the upcoming annual town election. To clarify, the annual town election will be held on April 5th, 2014. Candidates have until Thursday, February 13th to draw nomination papers, which must be returned with 50 valid signatures of registered voters by February 18th. The positions available are as follows: We have two seats for a Board of Selectmen for a term of three years, one Gas and Electric Commissioner for a term of three years, two school committee members for a term of three years, one Board of Assessor for a term of three years, two finance committee members for a term of three years, one planning board member for a term of five years, two park commissioners for a term of three years, one housing authority member for a term of five years. And this information is also listed under our town website, www.middleborough.com, under Election Information and Results. And feel free to contact the Town Clerk's Office for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Allison. Does anyone else have anything? Announcements and recognitions? Anyone on the Board have anything?
(inaudible).
Ms. Delpy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I would like to announce, when I did the PowerPoint a few weeks ago about tourism, my first goal and most important highlighted goal was to get an intern into the Office of Economic and Community Development. I would like to welcome Victoria Souza, Middle President, graduate of Bridgewater State University in Marketing, and she's already interned with Destination Plymouth, in Plymouth, the Town of Plymouth. She is now officially our intern here in Middleborough, and she started last week, and she's great. I'd like to welcome her and just announce that we're very happy to have her.
Beautiful, thank you.
I had one other, if you don't mind. One other, if you don't mind. The Herring Festival and the new Tourism Committee are fast at work, and we're putting together a festivals brochure for the entire year of 2014. So organizations out there who have festivals or events that they'd like to have listed in the calendar section, please, you can go to harringerunfestival@gmail.com or on Facebook, www.facebook.com/herringfriends, and get information about that. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Just following along Allison's correction of the upcoming town election, I will be seeking a second term. I pulled my papers, I'll be collecting signatures and turning them in before February 18th, and I will be seeking a second term. Anyone from the public? Did you have something, Ben?
Actually, we are under announcements and recognition?
Yes.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to recognize a few things. First of all, I wanted to give my thanks and recognition to our Fire Chief, Lance Benjaminio, in the Fire Department for doing their ice and cold weather survival training. I believe this was open to high schoolers, and, boy, I tell you, after that last weather blast, we could always probably all use a little ice, you know, survival training on, you know, something happens with all the bogs around here and ice, so if you didn't make it this time around, you know, keep posted on some other training that they may be offering to the public. Also like to recognize our Police Department, another successful drug raid as it relates to heroin. Chief, you're obviously here. I want to thank you and your guys, I mean, this is absolutely the most dangerous drug to ever enter into a community is heroin, and we had another big bust in a drug raid, so thank you to our, our Police Department for staying on top of that, that problem. Also want to make an announcement, the Central Congregational Church invites kindergarten through sixth graders to participate in their Pine Wood Derby. That'll be Wednesday, 6:30. Anybody want more information on that? Reverend Bruce Smith, 508-947-1256. I had to announce that, I just remembered the Pine Wood Derbies from my Boy Scout days, never won. And lastly, I just, I'm not going to say this member, this individual's name, but I would like to send my thoughts and prayers to a particular member of our school committee. And lastly, going to beat you to the punch, Alan, I just want to make the announcement officially that I unfortunately will not be seeking reelection through the Middleborough Board of Selectmen. My life has become very, well, my time's become very stretched, with full-time job, four kids, and now I've actually returned to college to get a graduate degree. So, that's going to make, you know, putting the proper amount of time towards being a selectman, very difficult, and I would never do this job if I didn't think that I was putting the amount of effort and time necessary to do this job right, just wouldn't be fair to the people of town. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you. It was just, but I, you know, I'll make an announcement like I say my last night here, but it's just, I'm really glad to know that you are running, Alan, again. And lastly, I would like to also recognize LaLani Delpy, because I do believe you have a new, a new committee?
Yes, Senator.
A board that you formed, and within the first year, you've made a huge impact, and I just want to recognize you for that, such a short time to be putting together a board like that, is quite impressive. So, thank you for all that extra. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ben. Chief?
Yeah, just a quick announcement, on Friday, from around 11 to 1, we're going to have a little luncheon at the Police Department for Lieutenant McWhitts, who recently retired, so if anybody wants to stop in and thank him for his years of service, he'll should be there around noon time, Friday, this Friday.
All right, on Sunday, actually, I had the opportunity to give a proclamation that we, we had drafted for Frank Albany, who served as the Director of the Soul Homestead for the past 11 years, and if you weren't there, you missed out, because those people know how to cook some good food. It was, mostly desserts, too, it was pretty good. So, thank you Frank, and the Soul Homestead is searching long and hard for a new director, and hopefully we'll have one soon. So, let's see.
Those are big shoes to fill.
They are, they really are. He did a fantastic job. All right, I will, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes for 11314.
So moved.
Second. Any comments, questions? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, passes. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the Chairman or his designee to sign the warrants for the week ending 1/24/2014.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right, new business. Vote to appoint Election Officer Appointments for 2014 as presented. Allison, do you have anything you want to share on this?
The Election Officer Appointments are pretty similar to the previous year, we've had a couple of new additions. Anyone who is coming on board as a new Election Officer will go through extensive Election Officer Training with me prior to any election. We do give them a handout of all the materials that they need as well. So this list is pretty much the people that have been dedicating their time to the community since many, many years ago.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Nope? All right. I'd entertain a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes. All right, next one. Vote to appoint Dominic DeAngelis to the Board of Registers as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Allison, do you have anything on this?
No, I just wanted to know, Mr. DeAngelis is here. The Board of Registars, as we noted in your memo, did meet with, with Mr. DeAngelis. He expressed a sincere interest in joining the Registars, he has the availability to be with us during the hours needed, and he has basically offered to speak if you need him to, but I think we're very happy with, with him. You know, we have gone through the Democratic Town Committee and followed the rules that we had to in filling the vacancy.
Mr. DeAngelis, do you want to say anything?
No, I'm...
What?
Oh, come on, Tom.
The only thing I want to say is that I want to give back to the town from way back when I worked for Mayor Curly in Boston, I was only a little kid passing up signs and stuff. I've always worked here in Middleborough, and I just want to give back to the town to help.
Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
I know, I see you out there every time.
Yes.
Doesn't matter what the issue is or what side you're on, you're, you're out there. I appreciate your, your participation. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve?
Would like to.
Oh, all right. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You're out there. Okay. The Board will take a vote to appoint Police Detective Sergeant Joseph M. Perkins to the rank of Lieutenant effective February 2nd, 2014, and authorize the Chairman to sign the required Civil Service forms. Chief, do you have anything to tell us about on this?
Joe's on top of the list, I think you all know him, he's more than well-deserving, and the position's open, so that's my recommendation.
All right. Anybody have any questions? I'd entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Board will take a vote to approve a request by Rivers Edge Realty Trust for a one-year earth removal permit extension. Charlie, do you have anything on this, or is this just pretty straightforward?
Generally, we regularly grant these one-year extensions, and to my knowledge, there's no problem with this particular permit that would...
There isn't, and I'm sorry, if I only just, did I just put the letter in?
Yeah.
I meant, I meant to put the current permit. So they have a permit, they went through their three years, they got the automatic two-year extension with the new state law, and now they are eligible for an additional one-year, which I verified with town council.
Nothing changes?
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody from the public have any questions? All right. I would entertain a motion?
A motion to approve?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Board will take a vote to appoint Corey Leeson of Lakeville as volunteer observer to the Middleborough-Lakeville Herring Fishery Commission for a one-year term ending 9/30/2014.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mr. Leeson, are you here? Nope? All right. I saw some emails from the Herring Fisheries Commission, they were all in favor of it, so, all in favor?
As I may, yeah, I received an email as well from the same, and they said that he was being approved in Lakeville as well as Middleborough tonight, so he could not be in both places at once, but he's very excited and happy.
It's coming up, it'll be here before you know it.
Yep.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Beautiful. All right. Board will take a vote to authorize the Chairman to sign a letter to the Civil Service, increasing the number of police officer vacancies from three to four on requisition number 01382. Chief?
In fact, I think the letter explains that when we started this, it was back in October, still pretty early in the fiscal year. Since then, someone else has decided they're going to leave the end of next summer, which I forewarned the Board a couple of years ago that this was coming, and this is how long this process takes. So, as a result of this last requisition, we found four suitable candidates, did a lot of work, spent a lot of time and money, and it got, we had three retirements this year, so, and they were all big salaries, so I'm confident that if we can get this fourth one in, the end of March Academy, it's 11 or 12 weeks in this fiscal year, I'm very confident I can cover it, and I think it's going to be wise, because if I can get them in, they'll be coming up in September, and they won't be up and running until, probably around December on their own, but I think this is the right thing to do. Like I said, once the wheels come off, I'm pretty sure I can do this, but I don't even know if there's going to be an opening for a fourth one, but basically, this is why I recommend it.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions?
That, when you say you're not sure, Chief, this is something deals with the Academy, it's only, I mean, a seat has to open up, and they're not sure if it'll be there?
What happens, Mr. Quell, is twice a month, they have what's called a PAT testing, and every time they have that testing, anybody that wants to go to an academy goes to the testing. Sometimes they have dozens of recruits show up, and as soon as they get through that testing, they all, the departments apply to these academies, so they keep getting filled up. I called a week and a half ago, they had a few slots left, so this fourth candidate, he may, may get in, but if he don't, then we'll just schedule him for the August or September one, so we get a seat in that one. Because the, the really, the Training Council is just not scheduled enough cadavers for the amount of people that are...
Sounds like a building problem.
It is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I'd entertain, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Knowlton?
I move to authorize the Chairman to send, sign a letter to Civil Service, increasing the number of police officer vacancies from three to four on requisition 01382.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief. Board will take a vote to award well development maintenance contract for East Main Street Well Number Two, Antispquin Well Number One. I have a letter here from Mr. Johnson.
Mr. Chairman, this is part of the capital plan, is the redevelopment of these two wells. We put it out to bid, and we got four bidders, and the low bid is Dennis Marr of Air. We've had good experience with them in the past, so we're recommending that we award the contract to them.
All right. Anybody have any comments or questions? All in favor? What did I take? We need a motion?
Motion first, yeah.
All right, let's have a motion first.
Mr. Chair. I vote, I move that we award the well redevelopment contract for East Main Street Well Number Two, Antispquin Well Number One.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Beautiful. All right. The Board will vote to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Middleborough and NEPBA Local 76, Middleborough Police Patrol Officers Union, to offer a stipend in exchange for opting out of the Town's health plan. Charlie, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, this, this is the same agreement we've signed with a number of our unions, and we had a request from the patrolmen to do this as well. Again, it's a, it's a win-win for both the employee and for, for the Town. It offers a stipend of either $1,000 for an individual plan, $2,500 for a family plan, and basically, the employee has to show us they, they are able to get themselves health insurance coverage through an alternate provider. So, I recommend that we sign this, you know, hopefully we'll have this kind of agreement in place for all our groups, you know, shortly.
All right, sounds good. I would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Beautiful. Moving right along. We're on time. All right, 7:30. I'll open up the hearing for the Edgeway Mobile Home Park regarding their request on action on a criminal complaint concerning the $100 day, per day fine for operating a manufactured home park without a license continued from October 21st, 2013. I would entertain a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
Want to pick three months out? I mean, I think, I think three months, look at this, and the residents' time to complete their transaction, and then this would just be over with, we could just close this hearing and end it.
All right, sounds good. So, March, end of March?
I'll go up to March 12th.
Get it counted out.
I have it now.
There you go.
The 26th?
Yes.
Good news.
24th?
24th.
31st? 31st? Yeah, March 31st.
Sure, March 31st.
Yeah.
You guys okay with that? We miss you guys, by the way. Meetings are a lot less exciting now. All right, so we'll continue that to March 31st, 2014.
At 7:30.
At 7:30. I'd entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Beautiful. Oh, boy. One minute. All right. Killing a little time, we're going to, well, it's not a hearing, so we can go right to...
Yes, we can.
All right, 7:35, we're going to discuss the draft site assignment hearing decision.
Mr. Chairman, we've given you tonight the transcript of the, the hearing that we had on December 18th, and a draft decision of approximately, exactly 12 pages, prepared by the applicant's attorney, and on the page right after that, which says the Middleborough Landfill Draft Site Assignment Conditions, we drafted some additional conditions to, to place on the applicant. I gave you tonight some modifications to those conditions, which had been drafted by, by our staff in consultation with our engineer. And just to refresh your memory, we have to finalize the decision by next Monday night and issue it and publish it within seven days thereafter in order to make it official. So, tonight was just to review with you the draft conditions to see if they met with your approval, and then, you know, if we had to further modify those, you know, modify them for next Monday night and have everything ready to go. So, Jean, do you want to speak to these?
As Mr. Chris Lohman indicated, we have prepared some conditions with the review engineer for the Board. Peter from Waste Management made some modifications to those. Some of them I have no problem with, some of them I think I will have to sit down with Peter and review, because I don't agree with him totally. So I, that's what I hope to do probably this week and get the final two moved before the meeting, before the end of the week.
All right, because, yeah, we need a final draft to vote on for Monday and then publish it.
Exactly. And if you recall, you know, the types of things this covers, you know, relating to litter and odor and, you know, trucks queuing, a lot of the things that came out and we discussed at the hearing are incorporated in these, in these draft conditions, and, you know, we added, you know, we noticed at the end, we, we added some additional shrubbery, because we noticed when we were up there that some of the shrubbery that had been planted didn't survive, so we're asking them to replace those as well. And then to, you know, we, we think there's a possibility that, that the, the handling of menorah on Saturdays, you know, coming in from the public may be the reason that we're continuing, we have reports of odor problems on Saturday nights, so we have a condition in there at the end to, you know, ask them to review how they're handling that, to see if there's a way of modifying it, maybe that'll have some positive impact on, on that situation.
And the only other thing I would bring up that the Board had after reviewing the conditions, if there were any of the issues that you thought you wanted us to look at that I can discuss with Waste Management before we finalize, or leave by the end of the week? If you do, just email me.
If I remember correctly, the queuing of the trucks was a big one, and the odor was a big one, and they all seemed to have been addressed. So, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd just say, you know, maybe we could, on the first one, probably define vicinity of landfill with some sort of distance in feet.
I'm sorry?
Well, when it comes to landfill operating, excuse me, we'll monitor the streets in the city.
In terms of the litter?
In terms of the litter, yeah.
Okay, we can discuss that.
I mean, I don't expect them to go too far down, but I don't expect it to be right around the corner either, so, something in feet would probably be nice.
Anybody else?
I don't know if Mr. Richard wants to say anything tonight, I know he and Aaron Smith are here. Peter, do you want to make any comments?
Hi, thank you. I just want to say that we did receive a draft of the proposed conditions earlier today from Charlie, that was appropriate for the engineer, and we're looking over that, and we, you know, just continue the discussion this week to make sure that the language that is finalized, that gets into the site assignment is, we can comply with.
Yep.
The only, the only thing I want to say is that because it's a site assignment modification, once it's in the site assignment, if we have to change the language later on due to some unforeseen, unexpected, you know...
A whole nother hearing, right?
Yeah, and, 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 you know, our preference would be that if we could refer to existing plans that we can modify outside the process, it's a lot easier. I just want to make the Board aware, that's all.
I had so much fun at that last hearing, I don't know why, you wouldn't want to do it again.
No, they're, it's just, there's, there's an easier way to manage it as an option.
All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
We look forward to working with Jean this week and we'll, we'll, we'll get the language ironed out and look forward to a positive decision next Monday.
All right, sounds good.
All right, so no action is required. We just wanted to, you know, have, have a brief discussion tonight, make sure we're on the right track and, and, you know, finish it up for next Monday night.
All right. Seven-forty, we're gonna have a hearing, WRPD application by Cumberland Farms. All right, I'll open the public hearing. Do I have to read this part, the top part? Yeah? The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing in the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall at Ten Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. on Monday, January twenty-seventh at seven-forty PM for the purpose of discussing an application filed by Marcus Arico Emmeran Brooks, PC, on behalf of Cumberland Farms, Inc. for a special permit under the Water Resource Protection District Bylaw to allow for the construction of a convenience store and gasoline station at ninety East Grove Street. Assesses map sixty-five lot two-nine-nine, ninety-two East Grove Street. Assesses map sixty-five lot one-one-one-two and one-forty-seven Wood Street. Assesses map sixty-five lot three-seven-two zoning district, general use WRPD district, Z four. Anyone wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. All right.
So?
The applicant, I think is here, Cumberland Farms?
Yes.
I, I just speak into the mic, please, when you're over here.
Sorry, we're a little bit late. That was seven forty.
No, you're fine.
I apologize if you're way on us. For the record, my name is Doug Troyer. I represent Cumberland Farms. We are before you tonight on an application to basically raise the existing buildings and construct a new forty-five-hundred square foot convenience store self-service gas station. The property is currently located in a GU district to which retail use and motor, motor vehicle light services are permitted. However, it's also in a Water Resource Protected District Z four, which requires us to seek special permit before the Board of Selectment, which is what the permit is tonight. We also have an underground storage tank license that's before the board after this one, but are proceeding with the special permit first. With me tonight is Chris Taimula, who's actually setting things up for me. He's with MHF Design, he's our engineer. I also have Gary McNotten of McNotten and Associates. He's our traffic engineer and is here to answer any questions that this board may have concerning traffic issues. Also have Jim Carpenter, who is our regional manager for Cumberland Farms, and actually Cheryl, who is the current manager of the existing Cumberland Farms, which is across the street. In essence, what is currently, Gary, what's currently on the property at ninety East Grove Street is an automotive repair workstation that was obtained a special permit from this board in two thousand and six and has been operated as such since then. There is also a ninety-two East Grove Street single-family home, as well as a one-forty-seven East Grove Street and another single-family home. There, the owners of those properties all have, in essence, the same ownership interest via...
Thank you.
Individual ownership or a realty trust. I have attached to my application authority from the owners authorizing Cumberland Farms to seek the special permit that they're looking for. In essence, Cumberland Farms has a purchase and sell agreement with those owners to purchase those properties should we be successful with permitting and proceed with the proposed convenience store gas station use. It's my understanding that the purpose of the Water Resource Protected District is to protect the quality and quantity of drinking water, to reserve and protect existing and potential sources of drinking water supplies, to prevent temporary and permanent contamination of the environment, and to protect, preserve, conserve, and maintain the water and natural resources of the town. It's my belief that after you hear our demonstration tonight that our project is in fact in harmony with the purpose and intent of the Water Resource Protected District, it will promote the purposes of the district, is appropriate to natural topography, soils, and other characteristics, and will not during construction or thereafter have an adverse environmental impact on the act of fire, and will not adversely affect existing or potential water supply. I think it's important for this board to hear exactly what we're looking to do on this site, and I'll have Chris Taimula give you that information. But just as a background, Cumberland Farms has been in Middleborough for many, many years. This site that is across the street is very dated. Cumberland Farms is kind of on a mission to go through the Commonwealth as well as Connecticut and other New England towns, and they're updating all of their sites. They're bringing a new style of convenience store, they're upgrading the safety, the convenience, the aesthetics, to become really good neighbors, to provide services for the town, and to basically really improve the aesthetics of the, of the properties. A lot of the properties are old nineteen-eighties, nineteen-seventies, summer nineteen-nineties, early nineties. In this, in this case, we have a lot of box, box convenience stores, and you have very tight sites. And on this site that's across the street, we have a really tight site, and what Cumberland is trying to do is expand its operations but also make a much more convenient, as well as a much more traffic safe, as well as updating all of its underground storage tanks, which I'll provide more information on in a little bit, to bring in the new state-of-the-art technology and to really upgrade the appearance of its sites. And I think this is a really good-looking site, and I want to have Chris kind of go through some of the basic specifics for you, and then come back to me with some more specifics. Thank you very much.
Yeah, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, Chris Taimula, I'm a civil engineer with MHF Design in Salem, New Hampshire. So as, as Doug kind of mentioned, we are redeveloping the existing site that primarily consists of three lots, and I've handed out some information. The first one is the green and gray color up plan of the existing site, where the brown features are the existing houses, sheds, garages. The gray area is your pavement, and then the brown area is your gravel area, which essentially is an impervious area as well. Everything that you see, see there today will be razored and removed, and what Cumberland Farms is proposing is a new forty-five-hundred-and-thirteen-square-foot convenience store facility. We'll be pushing the building as far back as possible on the site. In the front of the site, there'll be a new canopy with four fuel islands, and there'll be eight vehicle fueling locations. There's an existing curb cut along East Grove Road, I'm sorry, East Grove Street. We're pushing the, the driveway entrance further away from the intersection to provide a better entering and exit approach from East Grove. We're pushing the existing curb cut that's located here. We're pushing that further back on Wood Street, and there's an existing driveway to the existing residential house in the back, and we're pushing that further back as well on Wood Street. So we'll have three new curb cuts, all full access, thirty feet in width. Our canopy's here, again, the building's here. We're proposing twenty parking spaces around the site, along the front, along the side. We'll have a screened-in fence dumpster enclosure to the rear of the site. They have an air tower, an air tower element to provide, obviously, air for people's tires and such. We are proposing two twenty-thousand-gallon split compartment, double-wall fiberglass underground fuel storage tanks, which are located here in this dark gray area. Throughout the site, obviously, you can see we have a significant amount of landscaping that we're proposing on site with these brown and colored areas, landscaping beds, small raised planters. We're showing a new freestanding sign, which is surrounded by a stone planter as well. The proposed building, you can see on the third sheet in your handout, so what we have is a, a before and after. So if you stand here at the intersection, you can see the Highline, the Highland Automotive, the existing house in the back, and the existing house behind the garage structure, and then we have a proposed rendering of what you'll be seeing when, if Cumberland Farms is approved this evening. The building is a very nice New England-style building. You can't see it really well on this, on this, on this slide, but in the plan set, we have a dormered roof, there's faux stone around the building, which is brought into the element design for the column structures within the canopy, as well as the, the planter island around the freestanding sign. And on the last page of the handout, we have a view standing along East Grove, standing in this general area, facing the site that way. You can see the, the dormers on the roof, very, very neutral tone. This is, this is really Cumberland Farms' prototypical building for all the sites that they're, that they're developing. It's been very well received in many, many towns that we're permitting, and we're actually fairly happy to permit this in Middleborough as well as everywhere else that we're developing. As part of our plan set, what we're providing is a closed drainage system consisting of catch basins curbing around the site. So we have one, two, three, four catch basins. It'll collect all the site runoff that will be generated from the site. The current existing conditions out there, there, there's nothing out there. There are no catch basins, everything just sheet flows off-site into the existing drainage system along both Wood Street and East Grove Street. We have an underground roof infiltration system to capture stormwater runoff from the convenience store in the rear. This will fill up, recharge the groundwater, and then overflow into the proposed drainage system. We're proposing a, a storm scepter treatment device to capture all the, all the runoff in the back of the site and then discharge that into a detention basin. This detention basin would then discharge through a, a outlet control structure which mitigates the pre- and post-development peak rates runoff, ultimately discharging out into East Grove Street. For the front of the site, we again have two catch basins, but then instead of a stormwater, instead of a storm scepter, we're proposing a fifteen-hundred-gallon oil-water separator. In the event there's any spills on site, there's a, a much larger capacity in this, in this oil-water separator, and this would discharge out the, the same East Grove drain system. All the catch basins, including the oil-water separator, separator, have deep sumps of oil and, and oil hoods to prevent any, any oils and grease from discharging out of the Our landscaping plan, essentially on the, the package I gave you, our landscaping plan was, was overlaid onto our site plan, so on sheet, on sheet three, you're looking at the landscape plan overlaid on the, on the, on the site plan. So again, we have, we're proposing sod throughout the front of the site, lomax seed through the rear and the sides. We have our underground, I'm sorry, our above-ground detention basin in the back, and then we're also providing a row of, a double row of arborite, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, dark American arborites. They're planted six to seven feet in height. There'll be thirty-two of them running along here, and then there's an existing vegetated buffer along the northern property boundary itself. With that, it's sort of a brief overview of the, of the plans. Kind of hand it over to Doug, and he can go through it, or if you know.
Can you put the site plan back up, the colored one?
Yep.
I think the colored site plan that has the overlay of the landscaping is in my view for section page two in your handouts. Before I go further, and before I go yet, I'll give administrative, I have the grain cards. Can I hand these to Jackie?
Sure.
For, for, for served, and we have all the grain cards back, and we also have more action, so that's a very special permit, that's what it is.
Let's see, just a catch basin.
To continue on, I actually have received two letters that you have received from your building commissioner as well as from the Conservation Commission. I'd like to just kind of address quickly some of the issues that they've identified. The Conservation Commission identifies that ninety-two East Grove Street has a small portion of the property mapped with the Division of Fisheries and Wildlife National Heritage. That is in fact the case. It's actually in this area, this corner area right here, and it actually intersects. It's about fourteen-hundred square feet, a real small portion that comes on it. I've actually been in contact with them to determine what, if anything, we need to do. And from my review of the regulations, we are taking a position at this point that we may be exempt because we're doing some significant storm water management work on the site. However, we also have to have review of the division. Even though it's, it's an exemption, we still have to get review from them to determine it. And I'm in the process of getting that information to determine if I can go under that exemption or if I have to go through a full review. But it is on our list of things to do, and it is something which we plan on doing. And if necessary, we can overlay that area on any site plan emissions to basically make sure that it's clear that that is an area to which Cumberland Farms needs to address. The other issue that came up in connection with the Conservation Commission was they wanted to make sure that the gas tanks, the underground gas tanks would be of the highest quality to prevent any contamination from entering the surrounding soil. And as I could talk about more fully than the underground storage tank portion of this, briefly, what is there now is the state-of-the-art tanks. They are double-wall fiberglass underground storage tanks and piping, excuse me, piping with associated monitoring devices, enhance the environmental quality of the site by providing systems that meet and exceed the mandated state and federal regulations. We intend to install twenty thousand, two twenty-thousand-gallon tanks, one twenty thousand alone, and then another one's going to be a departmental tank, that has one compartment for eight thousand gallons, which will be devoted to diesel, and twelve thousand, which will be devoted to fuel. The other one will just be a flat-out twenty-thousand-dollar tank, twenty-thousand-gallon tank. There is significant safety features on these tanks. Like I said, they are double-wall fiberglass, rust-proof underground storage tanks for secondary containment, continuous leak detection, monitoring wells in the pads surrounding the tanks, and a built-in precision test capability. Cumberland Farms will install a new stage-two vapor recovery line and a VITR root monitoring system with an auto visual alarm system. It's our position that these tanks are the, are the, the new best of the best, and we are installing them in every single site which we're going into. We also have spill containment manholes, where typically you see three gallons of potential spill, we have them up to twenty-five gallons. It's something which Cumberland Farms takes upon itself, that they want to, they want to have that extra protection. Most gas stations you'll see only three-gallon spills, we have a twenty-five spill gallon container to cover those issues. I believe that the tanks in which we are putting in this are, are state-of-the-art and hopefully addresses the Conservation Commission's concerns. The other issue from the board, excuse me, the building commissioner indicated that he believes that the plan should be removed by your own town engineer. It's my understanding that your town planner has indicated that town engineering is not necessarily on this. Obviously, if that's something which the board wishes to pursue, be something which we would like to try and put as a condition on approval, something along those lines. But we believe this is pretty straightforward, and we've really tried to give you as much detail, my random, as submitted to you, of exactly what we're looking to do. Another issue that's come up is that actually we've had communications with a butter off one-forty-nine Wood Street. They have indicated... They have indicated that they would like to see some more landscaping. And on sheet two, you will see that we have proposed arborvitae trees along the side of the one residential lot. It's two rows of arborvitae trees. And we thought that the existing natural growth that was on 149 Wood Street was significant, but from my understanding, from the landlords, they believe that it's a lot of, there is some existing trees, but a lot of it's poison ivy and just dead material. I've spoken with my client, and while I don't have an upgraded site plan, I can indicate to this board that my client is more willing to extend the double-row arborvitae trees along that property line. We're willing to remove what is there and put in new trees, or even consider planting trees on the outskirts of the existing landscaping that's there. Another possibility that Cumberland Farms is willing to entertain, if the board wants to put a condition on this, is we could do a six-foot vinyl fence that would run the entire length of both properties and residential. But with that, we would eliminate the trees. It's my client's position that the arborvitae trees are much more aesthetic. They provide the necessary reasonable screening that your bylaw requires us to do on a residential property, and I believe we'll provide the necessary screening from that property from the convenience store. But I wanted to mention that to this board. That is something which we will, without any issue, do, but at this point, we're looking to try and do one over the other because of the significant cost of a four-hundred-foot vinyl fence is about the same as what we'd do for arborvitae trees, so we're definitely willing to do one over the other. Other things, there is a typo in my memorandum. The store across the street is actually a 24-hour operation. I have from 5:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. daily as being requested. I would like to request and change that to a 24-hour store merely, again, that is a request, and I wanted to change my application to reflect that. And I apologize for that typographical error. That was a miscommunication between me and my client. It wasn't my client's fault. It was my fault for inadvertently putting that in the application. I apologize to this board if that causes any problems. As I said, I have with me representatives from Cumberland Farms who can talk about some operational questions if you have. I also have Eric Knowden who can answer any possible traffic concerns that you guys may have. And Chris is obviously available as well to address any engineering specific questions. With that, we believe we've complied with the necessary requirements for a special permit on the Water Research Protective District, and respectfully request that this board grant our request, and if this board deems any conditions are necessary, place such restrictions on us. And I really thank you for your time, and ready, willing, and able to answer the questions you may have.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Norton.
Ladies first.
Okay, I'll go first. I'll be fast, believe it or not. You have the arborvitae screening on the properties you're talking about. On Old Wood Street, what would the, you see from the street then, just the catch basin? Is that, on Old Wood Street?
Along Old Wood Street, this tight area revolving, you have some landscaping planned for the front of the site, but it's our understanding that Old Wood Street is a very locked-up road, so we're trying to maintain more landscaping.
Right, so...
For East Grove.
It would just be, look like grass?
It would be, yeah, there would be the arborvitae here, there would be a shallow catch basin there. Maybe all the ground.
So you could see the detention basin?
That's not set in stone either. It's just, again, it's what our proposal was. If this board would like to see some screening on that end, I think that's definitely something we're trying to be willing to discuss.
It's hard to say what it would look like from the road, but I mean, I don't want an eyesore there either, which I'm sure you don't either. That's why I'm asking.
If I may, again, in perspective that you would be seeing, standing, so this is Old Wood Street.
Yep.
Come through here. And I think the question would be, if you can operate from what's there now, what would you be seeing, and what would you be seeing in the future?
The other thing is, is we would need to leave... This area here, in order to not conflict with any traffic flows or people coming in, we need to limit any kind of landscaping of this area. I wouldn't recommend anything down in this area other than what's there. People's sidewalks, hopefully be able to safely number in and out if some landscaping maybe rolls higher up. If it doesn't interfere with what we're trying to do with the storm management system in that area, I think that is something which we really want to consider.
Just a couple of questions. First, a comment. I would much rather see the trees, the shrubs, instead of a vinyl fence.
I agree.
That would be just my personal opinion.
Yes.
What's going to happen to the existing site across the street?
The existing site is going to stay open until construction is complete. Once construction is complete, we're going to shut it down. We own that property, so we have control over what happens there. We are going to remove the underground storage tanks. We'll do them the way in which you're supposed to. I think I have a representative here who can discuss what those necessary procedures are, but the tanks will be pulled. They will not be left. All environmental safeguards will be followed. That store will most likely be put out of the market. There will most likely probably be some sort of restriction on it to not be a gas station or convenience store. But as we do own that store, we do have a lot of control over what we will do. We have no intention of having two competing Cumberland Farms Gulf stations across. And again, the main reason we're closing that is it is a very tight site, and Cumberland really wants to improve its properties, and the only way in which we could really do it in Middleborough at that location was to go across the street. And we found an owner of three parcels of property that were willing to enter into P&amp;S with us, and we're fortunate and excited to do that. So that's what we're doing with the other site.
No, I agree, the existing location, it's very tight with the parking.
Yes.
It's hard to get in there when people are filling up for gas, that there's just no place to park.
Yeah.
I like that in general. I do, however, like the idea of having our town engineer as a condition, just looking over the proposed plans.
Would that be according to the fund where we would, under that statute? That's fine.
I'm not sure, though, how we would do it as a condition of an approval, though. I mean, if he's reviewing a plan that you're looking for approval of, kind of...
Yeah.
I mean, we could certainly get him to do it and be back here next week with his review.
Okay.
I think that would be more, you know, logical to do it that way. And, you know, I don't think a week's delay is two owners, so...
That's fair. No, it is not at all. I was, if you were going to say a month or so...
No.
Because of our P&amp;S, I'm kind of...
No, no, we understand that.
Trying to move things along. So at a week, I cannot argue with that at all.
Yeah, no, it's my fault. When I looked at this originally, there were no wetlands, you know, involved, and generally that tends to be where these get hung up.
Yeah.
But I wasn't thinking about drainage. And then when I saw the comments from the departments, I said, oops, I probably should have done that.
Yeah.
So if we could, that would be preferable.
No, in a week, I mean, you tell me a week, that's all right. You just let me know what I can do to streamline, if I can email him, if I can get it over.
We have it in an email form. We'll do it first thing tomorrow and ask you to have it to us.
If there's any additional information, just call me. I'll get it to him ASAP to streamline that process without a problem.
Again, I like the concept, you know, I think it's necessary moving forward for your business. Yeah, I like it.
Great.
Mr. Quell?
First of all, I think this looks great. You're right. It really does give a nice facelift to that part of town. And just as you've already alluded to a number of times, you know, when I come out of this school after picking my son up and I come up East Grove Street, on some of your peak times, you always got that one car just sticking their butt right out in the middle of the street, just waiting for a rear-end accident or something like that. So I can certainly see how you address that and allow them plenty of room to come in, swing around, just keep everything out of the streets. And again, I think the aesthetics look really nice on this. I guess the only, because, you know, you mentioned a number of times about the shrubs and whether or not it's a shrub or a fence, and you're certainly trying to accommodate the resident on the other side of that. What exactly is that reminding me? Is that, that's a residential home or is that...
It's a residential home.
Multi-family, okay.
And essence, what we have here is, this is commercial, this is the automobile repair shop. This is residential, and this is residential as well, and up here is residential. And because we border residential and a commercial, under your bylaws, we need to provide reasonable screening, and that's why I have no issue with adding the same type of arborvitae trees that we're looking here to do up here. The only reason this is on the site plan, not on the site plan here, is because we've had existing vegetation that, you know, not living there and not seeing it every day, we thought was sufficient. But based on conversations with council, I've informed them that we are willing to add some arborvitae or a fence. But Cumberland Farms, I think, will defer to a fence because I think it's more aesthetically pleasing.
And you have, I mean, you didn't get anything from the current residents there? Any particular concerns?
I know that they will probably be speaking in opposition tonight, so I think I'll get those after I'm done. Keeping up my project.
Just from, you know, the experiences that I've had in other areas, you know, the only thing I can think of is, I mean, I noticed where you put your dumpsters.
Yep.
So I would assume those big doors swing open and a big truck backs up, beep, beep, beep.
Yep.
Lifts up some pretty big dumpsters, shake, rattle, and rolls them into a truck, and then off they go.
Yep.
I mean, I've seen that make a little bit of noise. I know this is a Cumberland Farms question and not yours, but I would just probably be a little aware of what times those things come in and go.
Yeah, the good news for Cumberland Farms is we have a lot of latitude on deliveries, and we do take into consideration when our vendors come in, when our, excuse me, garbage trucks come in, as well as fueling. And we try and accommodate non-peak hours as we normally do it. And definitely, because we do border neighborhoods, do take into consideration not having a beep, beep, beep at 7:00 a.m. in the morning, or even 3:00 o'clock at night.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming out tonight. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a couple of quick ones. I'd be interested to hear what Mass Wildlife has to say about the endangered species and wildlife habitat in that far corner.
Yep.
Another one of the things that Ms. Cassidy brought up was the stormwater systems. When the stormwater, and I'm not an expert in this in any way, shape, or form, but when the stormwater goes through your system and leaves the property, it's clean.
I'll let Chris answer that since he designed the system.
Yeah, so again, so what we're doing, this site is considered redevelopment under Mass EP stormwater standards, and our goal is to make the site comply with the standards to maximum extent practicable. We had gone out there and we had done some preliminary test pits to determine the depth of the seasonal high water table, determine the soil conditions, and see what we can fit on the site from a stormwater perspective. So we have test pits. We did a test pit in the front, one where the detention basin is, and one where the proposed roof infiltration system is. We had a relatively shallow seasonal high water table of about four feet. So what that does is that doesn't allow us to really infiltrate the entire site. Being that it's a retailer or a fuel station or a gas station, you wouldn't want to infiltrate all the pavement in case there's a spill or anything. So what we've tried to do is we've separated the roof runoff, which is typically considered clean runoff, and that's why we have discharged that into a roof infiltration system to recharge the groundwater. And we have full treatment and pretreatment for the onsite stormwater. So it's a deep sump-headed catch basin, a deep sump-headed catch basin discharged to a stormwater vortex, a vortex-type stormwater system where any of the particles, actually it's a swirling-type motion, drops down into a deep sump, and then any oils or grease or contaminants are contained within the unit, and then it all discharges out into this detention basin. We have a long-term operation maintenance manual that's part of the stormwater package. And as an aside, we are permitting a pizza of an Hadley Mass, and we were told by the Conservation Commission that the O&amp;M plan that we're providing for that site, which is the same as what we're providing for this, is the best one that they've ever seen. It goes into how many times you need to clean out the catch basins, what you need to do with the sediment, you need to go to the proper sites, what you need to do for mowing of your detention basin, how to clean the oil-water separator in the front of the site. It's a full comprehensive operation maintenance plan consistent with the EP and the DCC's permits. So what we've tried to do is really give sort of a Cadillac version of a stormwater plan to the maximum extent practicable. Hopefully that answered your question.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate it. I find it hard to believe you guys found the one site in Middleborough that's not 100 feet from a wetland.
Got two sites, actually, believe it or not.
As far as the, it's just my only, only my opinion, the fence or the arborvitae on that back line, I think I'd kind of defer to the property owner.
Fair enough.
I don't want to make a decision on what they want without hearing from them.
Fair enough.
That's it for me. Does anyone from the public have any comments, questions?
Good morning, board members. Evening, board members. My name's Michael O'Shaughnessy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Ron, Nan, Shogam. They live at 149 Wood Street. They will be the direct authority to the project. I've had a couple of conversations with my brother regarding the plantings and the natural heritage issue, the perspective of plantings. Thank you for adding the double rows of arborvitae. We were actually looking for a belt and suspenders approach, perhaps the vinyl fence and the arborvitae, I mean, if it's going to be operating 24 hours a day, they are going to be seriously impacted by this. We would hope that the board would use its powers of persuasion under whatever avenue it feels appropriate to make that a condition of approval. As my brother said, we're not in favor of this. I mean, it's, my clients have lived in this house since mid-'70s. They did not buy it to but a gas station. I think it's important that the board consider findings it must make to grant a special permit is the use in harmony with the purpose and intent of the bylaw, putting tanks in the ground that have the potential, although be it state-of-the-art, to leak. It could leak in the future, who knows? I don't think you'll get an engineer to say with 100% certainty that these tanks will not leak. The other finding you need to make is it appropriate to the natural topography soils and other characteristics of the site to be developed? Well, I'm not sure you can address that. Number one, we don't know what's going on with natural heritage. They have to make their finding. Maybe there's an exemption, maybe there's not. If it's not exempted and it ends up being a take, they have to redesign the whole drainage system because they can't build it there. I believe the area overlaying it is where the detention basin is going. The other issue is soils. We don't know what's there for soils right now. It could be buried in the drainage report. I don't know. I didn't see it. Is it sand? Is it clay? Is it gravel? If something leaks, will it go right to the groundwater? The third finding you need to make, will the proposed use during construction thereafter have adverse environmental impact on the aquifer recharge area or water resources of the town? I'm not sure you can answer that. I'm not sure you can make that finding. You don't know what's going on with the groundwater. There's no groundwater monitoring analysis. There's no groundwater report. There's no hydrology. Where does the water go if something, where does the contamination go if it leaks? Does it go down towards the Masquet River? Does it go down towards the wells? I don't know. I think you need more information to fully vet that issue. And the last issue, will it not adversely affect the existing or potential water supply? Again, if it leaks, putting tanks in the ground, I'm not sure you can make that finding. Again, if the board is inclined to grant this permit, I would ask, at a minimum, as a condition of approval, that they require the arborvitae as per the bylaw and take a belt and suspenders approach with respect to the fence, at least on that portion where my client's property will butt this project. And that's it. Now, you have the answer. Any questions that the board may have?
Mr. Quell?
I'm sorry, sir, your client?
He's got a question.
You may have said it, I'm sorry. The source of your drinking water, if your client, is a well or a town?
No, there's no well. There's no well.
It's town water?
It's town water.
Anybody else have any questions?
No.
Hi, Mr. Solomini, how are you?
How you doing, Mr. Frawley? Mike Solomini, owner of Brad Lane. Didn't plan to be up here tonight. I was told not to come up and say anything, but I have to. Seems like this, um, type of business would draw more traffic. I know the one in, they, they seem to do a nice job when they upgrade their buildings. I know of one on Route 104 in Bridgewater, and one on Route 106 in West Bridgewater, and they did a really nice job on the building, the parking, and tried to deal with traffic flow. I used both of those roads. Um, like I said, they tried to do a good job with traffic flow. Um, has a traffic impact analysis been done? Because, I'll give you an example, Route 104, that, um, they put in a left lane to turn into Cumberland Farms, and most of the traffic turns right onto Prospect Street. Um, it's like a half a width too small, and cars try to squeeze up on the right-hand side, and the road wasn't, the sidewalk wasn't moved back enough. I'm just wondering, will this have an increased traffic based on the larger building? Will there be beer and wine sold at this Cumberland Farms like the one on Route 104? Will that cause an increase in traffic? And then my last question would be, um, the other two developments seem to have a plan for the old building, the one on Route 104 did, and this one doesn't seem to have a plan. I would hate to see an ugly unused building across the street with just the gas tanks removed. I would have hoped to have heard a more thorough thought and business plan of what they're going to use with that profit, or at least reface it, because otherwise it's going to look like an abandoned gas station with a beautiful building next door. Those are the only things that I can think about that I wanted to ask you tonight. And I don't know if we'll get any answers, but I just wanted to ask.
They have a traffic engineer present.
They do? Okay.
Would you care to address some of those concerns?
Good evening, uh, again, it's Gary McNaughton, it's actually McMahon Associates, everybody does that. I'm not the only one. Uh, and we haven't done a full-blown traffic study. I do live in town, this, I go to this facility regularly, the existing facility. Um, so when you look at the proposed facility, particularly in comparison to the existing, it's, it's primarily going to be drawing those same customers that are going there across the street. Uh, we've met with Mass DOT, talked about this project, at least on a conceptual level, they saw no problems with it. Knowing it, knowing how the existing site uses, uh, works, how the proposed site will work, you know, the, the queuing that everybody has seen of the existing site back out onto 28, creating that congestion, particularly even for left-turn vehicles coming into the existing site that have to sit there and wait for those cars to move into the facility. A lot of that gets alleviated with the proposed, uh, use, you know, the access, the driveways are further back from the intersection than the, than the existing facility. So we know it's going to be a significant improvement. Uh, and even if you were looking at this as a, a brand-new Cumberland Farms, that there wasn't a replacement for the facility across the street, you're talking, uh, you know, it's probably drawing 35 to 40 cars to the area over the course of the busiest hour of the day, um, and primarily because it's drawing cars that are already driving by the facility. When you look at the fact that it already exists, you know, the, the proposed expansion, newer facility, the bigger areas, because I know I've certainly driven by there, and there's a line of cars, you know, queued out onto the street, forget it, I'll get my gas somewhere else and go by, so you'll have a few more cars turning onto the site, but it's, you know, over the course of an hour, you're probably going to be seeing, you know, 10 to 15 new cars drawn into these roadways that wouldn't otherwise be there, which is effectively going to be imperceptible, um, when you look at the intersection and the operations. Um, aside from the times in the, the high schools getting in or getting out, you know, this intersection generally operates pretty well. It's, it's, you know, the, the signal's working well, you're not seeing long lines of cars queued out, um, up and down either way, so, you know, we don't see that that's going to change with the addition of this project. You can talk about what they're going to do with the facility.
Um, as I indicated before on the other facility, in response to that question, um, like I said, Cumberland Farms owns that property. Uh, we have no intention of doing anything, uh, with that property until we actually receive an occupancy permit on this. We do intend to sell it or lease it to another, uh, viable business, but it's not going to be another gas station or convenience store to directly compete with us. Um, we, I, my understanding, Cumberland Farms does not want to have a vacant piece of property across the street that it owns. It doesn't make sense, uh, to maintain a piece of property that they're no longer owning. This, this property is, is directly to replace what's across the street, and I believe real estate, uh, with the Cumberland Farms, you have many different levels of, of people. Uh, you got a real estate department, you got a construction department, and, uh, my understanding from real estate is that this property will be closed, and they will be looking to sell it or lease it out, and do not have intentions of leaving it vacant for a significant amount, period of time. If we had a lease on that property, that'd be a different situation. Uh, because we own that property, we have, uh, significant abilities to, uh, try and lease it or try and, and, and sell it, but the real estate market is a real estate market. And the good news is, the real estate market seems to be doing better, so hopefully, uh, we're not looking at a vacant site for very long. I'd also like to address real quickly Mr. O'Shaughnessy's, uh, comments about the underground storage tanks, uh, and that they may leak. Um, I actually have, uh, we have an engineer, uh, who performed a study for us back in 2012, uh, and basically concluded that the tanks of which Cumberland Farms is proposing, um, basically, uh, it's safe to say that there's about 100,000 double-wall tanks in service from 2012, uh, excuse me, uh, from 2006 to 2012, 100,000 of these tanks were put in the ground. In 2012 is over 200,000 put in the ground. Uh, this engineer was not, uh, familiar with any, uh, leaks, uh, beyond the double tanks. Uh, basically, uh, this all seemed to start, uh, in California about 20 years ago, and there hasn't been a leak even with earthquakes. These are state-of-the-art tanks, the reason they're double-wall fiberglass is to prevent any types of spills. The other thing is, is we have significant monitoring, uh, overabundancies of monitoring on these, on these tanks as well. Uh, there's visual, there's, uh, sound alarms, uh, alarms are tied into all kinds of different systems, and, uh, we have significant, uh, capabilities to stop any type of leakage immediate to prevent significant leakage, and because we have a 25-gallon, uh, spill overfill for certain areas, uh, we meet and exceed, uh, other gas stations which are approved. We try to do our best to have, uh, worst-case scenario in mind when we put these in the ground. Uh, we believe that, uh, for a gas station, uh, particularly, uh, what's going to go in here is going to be a significant upgrade than what's across the street. Uh, I believe those tanks have been in there for some time. Uh, these tanks are going to be state-of-the-art and, uh, fully monitored. Thank you.
Um, while you're there?
Yeah.
How do you feel about Mr. O'Shaughnessy's other comment that you should put the fence in the plantings up? A step like that will go a long way in showing your commitment to the community and partnership with the town. We would really appreciate something like that.
I think it's definitely something I can convince my client to do.
That would be awesome.
And the, the other thing, um, to go so far, I, putting a fence just along that line is, is, it may look goofy, so I, I gotta talk to my client to figure out if they'll run it all the way.
We would certainly, I think the board would certainly appreciate if you could get that done.
Well, it sounds like I could come back, uh, next Monday, and I can give you a, a firm answer on that, but, uh, you know, we're trying to, we want to be good neighbors, and if that's their biggest concern, and we can make that, uh, a better situation and, and get through the board and prove to you that we're going to be good neighbors, uh, a little extra money can maybe prove that, so, uh, I'll talk to my client and have a firm answer on that next Monday.
The company's making a significant investment. I don't think a couple more plantings.
I agree with you, and I, I could pretty much tell you I don't think it's going to be a problem.
All right.
But, uh, since I do have to come back next Monday because of the peer review, I'd like to reserve to say yes next week if possible.
All right.
So I don't, uh, get myself in trouble and I pay for offense.
Yep, I appreciate that.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me, Alan?
Yes.
Did you, um, as far as the underground tanks go, that's a separate hearing, so there's a separate hearing notice?
All right.
That needs to be read. I just see everything's getting mixed together now, so...
All right, well...
If we're going to be concluding, you might want to read that just technically.
All right.
Well, why don't, why don't we just finish this part, and then we can get on?
Yeah.
And that's fine, too, I just wasn't sure if everything was going to be fine, if they were going to bleed.
All right, we'll repeat ourselves.
Yeah, and for the record, I was just responding to Mr. O'Shaughnessy's comment on one of those.
Right, I just wanted to make sure.
I fully believe that we have to have another hearing on that.
Good evening, my name is Brian Givernone, and I'll stick to groundwater drainage. As much as I'd like to see something looked at regarding those, uh, the patio area with 12 new seats and, uh, that entryway like Route 106 would be perfect to keep people from trying to make a left-hand turn across Route 28 at a traffic light. Uh, but my concern is, at the entrance on Route 28, there is an existing catch basin that's probably state-owned, and, uh, it is, um, the connection point for their drainage after their stormwater oil grit separator. So if anything were to occur like an accident, like a head-on collision or something or so on, trying to make a left-hand turn out of the parking lot there, and all of a sudden were to drop everything into that catch basin, if that catch basin dates back to the '50s and it's state-maintained, which is pretty much no maintenance out there, maybe a few, few times every few years, um, I'd really love to see as a condition of this permit next week if possible, to have that one rebuilt with a deep sump and a, a hood to keep the oil in the catch basin. If something were to happen, it would stay in the catch basin, and that would be conditional upon Mass Highway allowing you to do that, I'm sure, as well, but that would just be something that this board regarding drainage could, uh, probably consider under the WRPD. Thank you.
Actually, I have Chris, uh, just quickly give his two cents on that.
Um, so the catch basin in question is this existing catch basin right here. If Mass DOT has no issue with us getting into the road and doing construction, um, the cost to upgrade that catch basin, we don't, we don't have any issue with, uh, with upgrading that deep sump, putting a hood on it. Uh, obviously, we have to make sure it is constructable, and we have to do that, and Mass DOT has to allow us to, uh, you know, do that as well, but we, we have no issue with doing that.
Beautiful.
But the problem with that is, is definitely getting, uh, Mass D, DOT to basically approve on that. We're definitely willing to, uh, make that attempt in hopes that they would approve it.
Any members of the board have any more comments or questions? Any members of the public have any more comments or questions? All right, do I close the hearing now?
No, no, we're both continuing ahead of our next, um, weekend.
Pending peer review by our towns engineer?
Yeah, uh, so, next Monday, uh, we have the time, Jack, or?
It looks like we're open. We have nothing, so, seven thirty.
Nothing?
Not yet.
Nothing going on?
I'm sure that won't last.
I would entertain a motion to continue this hearing until next Monday at 7:30?
So moved.
Second. Second, um, I have a motion and a second. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close unanimous. All right, stick around, we'll talk about the tanks next.
Yeah.
All right. Um, I'd like to open up a hearing for the underground storage tank permit application by Cumberland Farms Incorporated for 90 and 92 East Grove Street and 147 Wood Street. A hearing will be held at the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass, on Monday, January 27th at 7:50 PM for the purposes of discussing an application filed by Marcus Arico, Emmer, and Brooks, uh, PC on behalf of Cumberland Farms Incorporated for an underground fuel storage tank permit with a total quantity of 32,000 gallons of all flammable liquids to be stored and a total quantity of 8,000 gallons of all combustible liquids to be stored for property located at 90 and 92 East Grove Street and 147 Wood Street, assesses map 065, lot 299, map 065, 112, and 372, Middleborough, Mass. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. All right, open up the hearing.
Can I, uh, identify a procedural issue?
Sure.
It's actually, uh, 40,000 gallons, uh, of, uh, gasoline, one, uh, 8,000 gallons or 12,000 gallon, uh, departmental tank, and another one at 10,000 gallons. Uh, so the notice that went out seems to have a typographical error in it that I did not notice until you just read that.
So it's a total of 42, but the way we listed it with a...
It's a total of 40.
Forty.
It's two 20,000, uh, so, each tank is 20,000. One is, uh, has a...
Twelve and eight.
Twelve and eight.
All right, they're both twelve and eight.
They're both twelve and eight?
Well, one, they're, um...
They're, um, it's a, it's a 8,000 gallon diesel and 12,000 regular, and then a 12,000 regular and 8,000 supra.
All right.
So it's, it's 8,000 diesel, 32,000 gas.
I think we have that listed.
Yeah, we do. If you add them together, we're in.
It's, uh, it's what's on the application, but the notice that you just read didn't say that. The notice said 32,000 gallons.
All right.
So I just want to bring that to the attention, uh, didn't know if there was any.
The newspaper says 32,000 gallons of flammable liquids and 8,000 gallons of combustible. And that's on the application. So I'm missing something.
I think diesel and gas are considered to be so.
No, I think, I think you're right. It says the quantity, 32,000 gallons of all flammable storage to be stored and total quantity, 8,000 gallons of combustible liquids to be stored.
All right, so diesel has a...
So it's basically 40,000, it's just the wording of it, so I think it's fine.
All right.
It's just separated.
You're fine. My, uh, my, my mistake, so I think you're 100% correct. So I'm sorry I brought in a mistake to the attention of the board. I think we're fine with this. Um, okay. We, uh, met with the fire chief, uh, before filing, uh, this application, and in fact, your bylaws require us to meet with him. Uh, actually, Gary McNaughton met with him, uh, because Gary lives in Middleborough, so it was more convenient for him to meet with him, and based on what Gary informed me, fire chief was, uh, only question the fire chief had in connection with the, uh, application was the traffic flow on the site, and after we showed the site plans and maneuverability and the access for emergency vehicles and such, uh, my understanding is the fire chief had no issues, uh, and signed off on the, uh, application. I have given you, uh, substantial detail on what we're looking to put in. I don't know if you need me to repeat it, I'm more than willing to repeat it for this hearing, but it's in essence the same thing that I, uh, identified to this board of all the safety measures and exactly what's going in the ground. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm, it's up to the board if you want me to repeat, or if, uh, I can reserve, or basically direct you to my testimony in the prior hearing concerning that, that evidence.
I'm okay with it. Anybody else?
So, with that, uh, we would respectfully request that, uh, this board grant the underground storage tank license. Uh, it would be in conformity with our ability to construct a convenience store and gas station on the property. We believe that it meets all the standards, and the fire chief has signed off on it, and we respectfully request this board to, to grant that application. And any questions you may have, um, again, have everybody here who may be able to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? Anyone in the public have any questions?
Mark Wood, Middleborough. I want a clarification on the, how the tanks are constructed. From what I understand, the groundwater, um, at least seasonal, seasonally has the ability to be, uh, fairly shallow, I believe four feet, as mentioned. I know you indicated the tanks would be on a pad. The tanks, my best estimate would possibly be partially covered with groundwater at some point during the year. I was wondering, uh, if there is anything above the pad, are they actually in a vault of some kind? Or are they sitting on a pad in the ground? And when you talk about secondary containment, are you talking about the double wall of the fiberglass, or are you talking about some other type of secondary containment as well?
Okay. To be clear, the tanks are 20,000 gallons each. Tanks have two compartments, one compartment which contains 12,000 gallons of regular gasoline, and one that contains 8,000 gallons of premium. The second tank will contain 12,000 gallons of regular gas and 8,000 gallons of diesel fuel. fuel. Compartments are separated by fiberglass reinforced plastic bulkhead. Two gasoline compartments are connected by a pipe that creates a syphon, so the two regular gasoline compartments in the two tanks act as one tank. Primary tank and secondary tank are constructed of fiberglass reinforced plastic. The fiberglass reinforced pla- plastic tanks and piping contain glass fiber reinforcement embedded in cured thermostat resin. Thermostat plastics are resins that undergo irreversible, excuse me, irreversible reaction when cured in the presence of a catalyst. The tanks and piping meet the standards of the following organizations: API, American Petroleum Institute, American Society of Mechanical Engineers, American Society for Testing and Materials, American Waterworks Association, Factory Mutual Research, Natural Sanitation Validation, Underwriters Laboratory, Inc. As I indicated before, they are double wall. The containment area at the top of the tank has a liquid level sensor. Should the primary tank contain a gasoline or diesel fuel fail, the brine will leak into the primary tank, and a level sensor will activate an alarm. There will be no release to the environment. As I indicated before, in 2006, there was approximately 100,000 double wall tanks in service. As of 2012, there's 200,000 plus. As of today, I am unaware, and the engineer that wrote my report was not aware of any leaks beyond the double tank fiberglass areas. These are underground tanks. I don't believe... Any idea of the pad issue?
Typically, again, for the record, Chris Tumore from MHF Design, so, it's a little bit of a new project. Typically, unless there's a high groundwater table, we don't ballast the tanks by basically tying them down. The tanks will sit on a six to, a six inch or 12 inch gravel base, and there's, you know, unless there's a significant problem during construction, there's no need to actually put them on a concrete pad or ballast them by any means, for seasonal high water table. Again, that's just the observed elevation of the water at a particular time. It doesn't mean that there's standing water in the hole at any time. The tanks are, they're a solid, they're a solid piece of equipment. There's no possibility, there's no chance of water entering the tank, or because they're double wall, they're state of the art, and there's very little chance for them having any issues in the future, you know, as Doug mentioned.
Is there any way you could get a copy of your engineering report to Mr. Wood so he could reference it?
I could give him a summary. This is a report that is based on another project that gives me some basics of stuff. It's not necessarily, it's a report that was done that gives me the basics of what an underground storage tank is and what it is. So, it's not necessarily a report that is generated by me. It's a report that has been generated by an engineer for similar sites for Cumberland Farms that has identified these systems.
What about like a material safety data sheet or something like that?
I could definitely, I could definitely get that to him, and you want to email? I can email it to you if that's convenient. I'll talk to you afterwards, get your email. I will email him...
I appreciate that.
...a safety data sheet, no problem.
Mr. Salamini?
I just heard there's, the two tanks are going to be connected so that they keep it, is that what I heard?
No, I think it's two separate tanks, but the two compartments in each tank, correct?
Yeah, so, so there's no crossover pipe between the tank?
That's right.
Okay. Because everything's pulled from the top, and the tank's secured, right? And the containment would be in the tank?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any more questions? From the public, anyone? All right, I'm going to close the hearing. Hearing is closed. I would entertain a motion from the board.
I'd like to... I can make a motion to approve an underground storage tank permit application to Cumberland Farms for 90 and 92 East Grove Street and 147 Wood Street.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Zero? Unanimous. Beautiful. One down, one to go.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
See you next Monday night.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're a little behind, 8:00 PM. We have a hearing for the earth removal permit application filed by GAF Engineering on behalf of River Rock Realty Trust for 288 Thompson Street. All right, a hearing will be held in the Selectman's Meeting Room at Town Hall, 10 Nickerson Avenue, Middleborough, Mass. on Monday, January 27th, 2014, at 8:00 PM for the purpose of discussing an application filed by GAF Engineering on behalf of River Rock Realty Trust for an earth removal permit for the property located at 288 Thompson Street, Middleborough, assessors map 033, lots 2968, 2065, 2146, and 1366. The reason for this request is the construction of a cranberry bog and a water supply tailwater pond. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. Hearing is now open.
Good evening, Bill Madden from GAF Engineering, here on behalf of River Rock Realty in the earth removal permit application they have before you. Have the green cards if you'd like those now.
What the proposal consists of is the construction of a 3.5 acre cranberry bog and one and three quarter, 1.67 acre tailwater, tailwater recovery property at the, at the site. The tailwater recovery pond is shown in blue, and I think you have a PDF on your iPad that indicates the plan, but it may not be in color. I think that you have the plan sheet, and that would be sheet two of three that you have. But essentially, what involves is the construction of this 3.5 acre bog in a 1.67 acre reservoir slash tailwater recovery pond. What the intent is here is to excavate the material, bring the bog and the cranberry bog down to a particular elevation in the, as well as the reservoir, and excavate out those two structures once the bulk earth removal has been done from the site. So, that's a general overview of what we're doing with the excavation. The, the access to the site is off of Fuller Street. We're essentially going to come in off of Fuller Street and cut a 25-foot access drive that will come to the back of the site. Work will begin at the rear of the property and move, move to the, to the, I guess what I call it, the west out here. The access driveway would be provided with, would be 25 feet wide, and be provided with a hundred feet of tuminous concrete temporary driveway, so that serves as a tractor pad immediately facing to the roadway. Preceding that, tuminous concrete driveway would be another hundred feet of what we call three-inch road base. It's three-inch crushed stone. So, the three-inch crushed stone would act as, as a tractor pad, and then would be finished on a, on a precast, on a, sorry, on a tuminous concrete pad for the last hundred feet. So, that would, that would work to remove any mud and dirt that was on the, on the tires of the trucks. The way the site sets up now, everything drains from Fuller Street into the site, so we've just shown some additional grading. There was a comment that was raised by Rich Tabazinski at Atlantic Design. They did a review of the project. I do have letters, a letter responding to their comments that I'll, I'll pass out after I'm done discussing the project briefly. But essentially, that's what we're going to do, is just come in off of Fuller Street. We'd like to build this 25-foot wide access road, come to the rear of the property, start our, start the work at the rear, progressing, progressing forward. We expect the work to take about three years to do. We have a phase, the first phase of the work in the basing plan that I provided talks about removing about 400,000 yards of material over an 18-month period of time. That would essentially involve just getting the site down to, down to it, to that elevation. That elevation, I think, is elevation 41 is what I, is what it refers to on the plan. So, we would, we would have a basic bowl that would be shaped in here after 18 months at one particular, at one particular elevation. We would then come in and excavate out the area for the bog and begin excavation of the pond. Another comment that was raised by the review engineer was construction de-watering. Excuse me. And what we would propose to do is essentially divide this reservoir into two halves. We would dig one half. Any construction de-watering that would need to be conducted would be pumped from a sump in a pump into a section of the cranberry bog. So, what we would do is we'd keep all the water, and we're pumping out of here really localized to the, to the, to the project area. So, we realize we'd be essentially pumping the same water, it'll get essentially in a circle, but that would be the best way of handling it. There would be no need to have an off-site discharge point for any stormwater or any, or any groundwater that we may need to pump. The other option would be to dig it, dig it in a wet condition, but we think that the way we have this set up, it should work, it should work just fine. So, we're able to do one half of the reservoir, pump that water into the, into say, half of the cranberry bog, then we would switch over and dig the other half of the reservoir, pumping that water into the, into the bog until we receive the, till we attain the desired elevation of that pond. We're proposing we're down at about, I don't know what we have here, 34, or it's about 20 feet feet as far as the pond goes. The pond has been sized to 6.5 acre feet per acre of cranberry bog, and that's the same number that DEP, if they were to grant a water management act permit for water use on the property, that's what they would give us, a permit for 6.5 acre feet per acre of bog. Given the size of this, very small, we are not, we do not need to go to DEP for a water management act permit. I just point that out because that's, it was another question that was raised by the review consultant. We've been through conservation, we submitted a request for determination of the capability with them, for the only, the only work that we were proposing was to be within 100 feet of the existing cranberry bog acreage owned by Bayside Agricultural, and they gave us a negative meaning that we're working in a resource area or a buffer zone, but would not have any adverse impact to that resource area. So, for mitigation over here, we've just shown some silt fence that would prevent migration of any sediment should, should it find its way there, which we're not expecting. And what else do we have on that? There was also a comment about this pond that was shown here. Prior to our company becoming involved with the earth removal permitting, this site also received an abbreviated notice of resource area delineation from the Conservation Commission that basically approved the boundary of the pond as shown on a plan that was prepared by Outback Engineering, and also approved the BBW boundary as is shown up here in this orderly portion of the site. So, we've gone through conservation, and we have a negative determination from them. We also have an ANRAT for the, for the site itself. In all, it looks like we'll be removing in the order magnitude about 750,000 yards of material over time. We've projected, my estimates are for a 50 truck per day removal rate. Using that 50 truck per day removal rate, it will take us 18 months to get down to base elevation. Then we have another year that, without any front reach, we have another year of 200,000 yards of removal. And then the third phase of the work would really be just building these, these two structures that would entail the removal of about 150,000 yards. So, we know that we can complete the work within that timeframe, but, you know, sometimes weather gets in the way, and market conditions get in the way of that, and understanding your permit application is also an opportunity to come before you for a one-year extension should we not complete the job within the three-year timeframe that we, that we've selected. There was a comment that was raised by Atlantic, and that was on the number of trucks that we would allow or that we were looking for. Typically, you haven't really limited truck, trucking from an earth removal site. We were simply leaving that up to the discretion of the board to make the determination of what they felt was appropriate, given the conditions on the site and the project as a whole. Obviously, the fat, the more trucks allowed to remove material decrease the time that it takes to complete the project. So, one thing that we've considered, but honestly, we believe that that's something that the board would probably be in that position to select and we, the, the nuts. So, that's essentially what we, what we did with respect to that. I do have that letter from Atlantic. I have prepared responses to it. I have it available. I'd like to pass it out, and we could go through those if, if that's acceptable to the board. I don't know how you'd like to proceed on that.
I don't know about anybody else, but I certainly want, yeah, I'd like to see the I don't know if we can, if we want to, or if we have enough time to go through each and every one of them.
They were, they were only 18, so, some of them were pretty, they were very straightforward. This plan also reflects some revisions that we made.
Well, I think we want to send this back to Atlantic and have them look at it again with the responses.
We have, we just got comments from our town planner.
Yeah, we have planning comments too tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, we would like, can you send a copy of these responses back to Atlantic Engineering?
I can do that tomorrow. I have not done that. I forward it to the Selectman's Office.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the information. I'm glad we have it, but it's, we're not the engineering department, so.
No, that's fine. We understand that. Their, the way our letters prepared, we addressed each one of the Atlantic's comments, and then our response to that comment is, is below. Their comment in the first one was, there was a, they had a, I don't know, an issue with the, the maps and the, the mapping that, the lotting that was shown on the assessors' maps, and our application clearly states how we use the, the letters that we, the lot numbering system that we use, and we felt that that was just in, the clarity is in the application. On the plant, plan checklist, he wanted to see the distance of the reservoir from property lines. We've added those to the plan. I think that what the earth removal regulations call for is 200 feet from public ways and 100 feet from property lines, and we've noted those on the plans. Site de-watering and discharge, they wanted more information on that. Well, I have that responded, I've responded to that comment in comment number five of his review letter. He had another question about fencing. We do not propose any fencing on the project, so there was none shown on the plan. Their comment three was the anticipated number of truck trips was not provided, should be estimated for each phase of the work. I went through the math for each phase to explain how we got to the full removal rate over the three-year timeframe. The first portion of our response was that we, we basically worked off that 50 truckloads a day coming off the site, and I used 210 days per year as, as actual working days due to weather conditions, weekends, and things of that nature. We find, at least I've found over my experience, that about 210 days works pretty consistently. Granted, some years you can do more than others, but my experience is that the 210 days works pretty well. So, under phase one, we would remove just a little under the 400,000 that we talked about. Under phase two, we remove 200,000 on, in a nine-month timeframe, and under phase three, we move, we remove 150,000 yards in that same nine-month timeframe. So, we have 18 months initially in two nine-month periods. So, that's the three-year timeframe allowed under the permit. Mentions that appears improvements may be needed at the site entrance to Fuller Street to accommodate the size and the volume of the trucks entering the site, and the angle of the proposed road is skewed and the radius is very tight. Yeah, he's right, the angle of the proposed road wasn't 90 degrees, it's 80, actually 82 degrees from, from Fuller Street, and we show a 20... And, um, that 25-foot width coupled with the 30-foot radiuses, um, easily handles the turning radius of a, a standard dump trailer WB50 is what we used in the office. Um, and there's only a left-hand turn coming out of the site. We did provide the radiuses on each side and those revisions were made to the plans that I gave you. Um, and, uh, we think that it's easily accommodates the trucking that's proposed. The de-watering plan that needed to, needed to be provided, he says details have not been provided or there are private wells nearby that may be affected. Um, dividing it into the cells, pumping the groundwater onto the cranberry bog really works quite well. In fact, that's standard construction practice when we build a bog that's a closed system like this. We've done quite a few over the years and have found that that works out quite well. In addition, any fine textured sediment that is washed out of the sand and gravel, that helps form the layer that we show on our plan as a slowly permeable confining layer. What we want to do is be able to hold water on the bog over time for various agricultural practices that take place throughout the course of the year. And by providing that washout area, that silt deposit area on the subgrade of the cranberry bog, it really helps achieve that, um, that function. So we think that the localized nature of the, the withdrawal plus the recharge would not have any impact on neighboring wells. And as far as the wells go, the, the neighboring wells that we've been able to identify, most of those are bedrock wells. They're drilled wells in excess of 300 feet. And, uh, they're really taking their water from a different source. Their water's not coming from the overburdened water table that we're working in here. Um, theirs is coming from the cracks in the rocks, some, you know, 200, 300 feet down below the surface of the ground. On comment six, they asked us to provide the criteria for sizing of the reservoir. We sized it at the 6.5 acre feet per acre of bog consistent with DEP's Water Management Act regulations. My professional opinion on that is that I like to have the annual volume on hand for any set of circumstances. We don't know what will happen as far as drought condition in, in the, in the summertime. If that water table drops three or four feet during the course of the summertime, the top surface being larger than the bottom surfaces, you know, we use, lose quite a bit of volume on the, uh, in the event of evaporation and lowering of the groundwater table. So it gives us a little bit of a cushion there. Similarly, in the wintertime, you may get a foot of ice. Um, that also takes away, takes away volume. So we felt that the 6.5 acre feet would be appropriate in this particular instance. His comment number seven was with an excavation of over 75 feet deep with the reservoir, will blasting be required? And, you know, prior to us getting involved with the project, you know, we reviewed a USGS map. It's entitled Bedrock Topography and Texture of Unconsolidated Deposits for the Taunton River Basin. Um, it was done in 1983 and the bedrock that's shown on that map is at elevation zero on mean sea level datum two, elevation 25. There's contours that are shown on the plan. So our 14 sits right in where those elevations, um, where those elevations lie between the 25 and the zero, where at 14. If we were to encounter ledge or bedrock, um, a little further up than what is anticipated, I think that what we would do is just simply shorten the depth of the reservoir by that, by that footage and that also plays into that 6.5 acre feet.
So you're saying no blasting?
That's what we're saying.
All right. You could, you should have just said no blasting.
Oh, I think.
I appreciate the way you said, uh, cause that, that's an important question for the, uh, the abuddies.
Yep. Um, second comment was, the eighth comment was, uh, setback to property lines, which we've added to the plan. Uh, the ninth comment was relative to dust control and dust control is on an as-needed basis. If there's a wa, water truck on the site that we're anticipating having there, um, when dusty conditions develop, then the work area, the travel ways do need to be of watered with that water truck. So, uh, this material is, is very coarse, coarse grain, granular, um, gravelly. We don't expect to have many fines in that. We would expect to have it less than seven, five to seven percent. On comment number 10, the proposed operation times, your bylaw dictates the operation times, which is 7:30 to 4:30. Uh, the tracking pad on comment number 11, I previously addressed. I talked about the erosion control measures that we're placing by the existing cranberry bogs. That was comment number 12. And when we called that a temporary stockpile area, that was really one of the more end-use types. That's where that area would be used to stockpile, um, sand for bog sanding and things of that nature. Comment number 13 discusses the, the wetlands surrounding the pond. As I explained previously, we already have that resource area, um, approved by the Conservation Commission and we have added the 100-foot buffer zone as suggested. Comment 14, he brings up that a stormwater pollution prevention plan would be required for the work. Um, we would respectfully disagree with that. It doesn't meet the standards for a stormwater pollution prevention plan according to the EPA guidance. Um, it does exceed the one acre requirement that I think that they were looking at, but there's, whereas this is a closed system in the way it's designed, there's no way for the water, stormwater otherwise, to find its way to waters of the U.S. So in light of that, a stormwater pollution prevention plan would not be required. Um, on comment 15, the grading shows that Fuller Street's about 16 feet higher than the low spot in our driveway. So all the drainage from Fuller Street comes onto the property. We re-graded the site driveway to some degree and, um, we show that all that water would discharge back onto the property and we would not be having any of it enter into Fuller Street. And the project plan needed to be dated and made reference to the site plan. I mean, I thought it was kind of, uh, part of the application, but we've added the date in the plan rest, the plan reference for the added clarity. Um, so as far as the engineering side of things, we thought we addressed pretty much everything that, uh, Atlantic had pointed out. We did receive the letter from the, from the town planner and, uh, you know, that didn't really, I just got that late this afternoon. Haven't had an op, real opportunity to digest what was in it. But, um, other than that, that's essentially where we are today in the process.
Did you get a copy of, um, the comments from, uh, our DPW director?
I did not.
All right. And you, you haven't gotten a copy of the comments from, uh, town planner?
I did receive town planner comments, um, late today.
Yeah, I, so did I. I haven't even had a chance to go over them yet. But, um, does anyone else have any questions? Um, your hours of operation are slated to be 7:30 to 4:30?
Yes.
Do you guys take an hour for lunch?
Um, I'd have to ask, but I think it's a half.
Half hour?
Does anybody know? Half an hour? No lunch?
You guys don't take lunch? You should. Um, for an eight-hour day with 50 trips, 50 truckloads, that's 100 trips, you're getting into, I think it's one truck trip an hour. I mean, one truck trip every 10 minutes.
Mm-hmm.
For three years on these roads that people live on. That's, uh... To say you're going to be done in three years, like, I'm going to kind of make sure you stick to that. I don't know if I'd, I'll be sitting here in three years, but I'll probably be sitting over there if I'm not over here. If you say you're going to be done in three years, you have to be done in three years. I know we have the one-year extension period, but, uh, ask somebody who lives on that road to put up one, with one truck every 10 minutes for three years and then say, well, we need another year. That's a lot to ask. So I just want you to be aware of that. Um, that's all I have for now. But, uh, I certainly think we should let the engineers, um, go over the responses to these plans. Get a good opportunity to, uh, to digest Ruth's comments. I haven't, I just haven't had a chance to read them yet today.
We only just got them, yeah.
So, and, um, so I, I would certainly entertain a motion to continue this.
Mr. Chair, if you could just add, right along the lines you were saying, if you could think about numerous routes, Route A, B, and C, just to spread the pain around. Okay. You could. I just, you just been through it. Thank you.
Does anyone in the audience have any comments, questions? Feel free to stand up, sir.
My name is Steve McCann and I live on Fuller Street. And for the board's information, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we have already been putting up with two years of trucks up and down our street every single day. I don't know how many times a day because they're doing the same exact thing at the beaten logs. They've completely ruined Fuller Street. You can't even drive down the street without hitting the pothole. This, this street is for, it's a residential area. There's, quite frankly, there's more traffic with wild turkeys than there are residents walking up and down the street. It's ridiculous. We can't have all this construction and all this stuff going on. We've been putting up already for two years. And it's just, it, it's just appalling to us as citizens. My wife can't even walk down the street. I can't go running without running into a diesel fuel in my face. It's just ridiculous. This is going to be another, just slap in our face, you know? We're good taxpaying citizens up there and we're tired of it already. We've had it for two years. And I appeal to the board to reject this motion because it's just too much. We've already put up with it for a couple of years. And I just respectfully request that from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
Uh, my questions are, did I understand right, Bill, right?
Yes.
Seven percent of how many tons people with asthma will have to deal with because you're only going to deal with it if you happen to have a water truck on site?
Ms. Williams, can you address your comments to me? And, because the way it works is you're not supposed to talk to Bill directly. You, you talk to the board and then he can stand up and address the comments.
Okay. So what about people with asthma? I think they clearly said they will deal with that if they happen to have a water truck on site. That's a problem, number one. Number two, in the last several years, my pond has gone down a foot, 10 feet from the shore from where it used to be. Is there enough water around for this? But overall, I'm in favor, but what about the water?
And the dust.
And the dust. Can we deal with those?
We're certainly going to look into it.
Thank you.
My name is John Garanito. I live at 37 Fuller Street. Will you keep, uh, public comment open to the, the next continuance as well or?
Certainly.
Okay. Cause I, I've had some discussions with, uh, Mr. Beaton and Mr. Aruder and Bill, um, that I hope they address maybe for the next meeting so I can maybe comment on them now.
If you want, if you, you're more than willing to do it at the next meeting, but I would recommend if you, if you could email the board of Selectmen so we have your comments before the hearing? So we're more familiar with them?
We can do that, yeah. I think they'll address them. We've had, you know, I just looked at this a week ago today, so I haven't really been able to understand it. I'm not opposed to it. Uh, I live at 37 Fuller Street. Uh, the bog that the gentleman mentioned earlier is probably, I, I'd say that I'm probably most impacted by that bog. The trucks, uh, enter and exit right across from my driveway. I have to admit, I'm not there during the day. Um, but I, it hasn't been a problem. Mr. Beaton has been my neighbor for 20 years. Uh, he's a great guy. Good operation. Uh, Mr. Aruder, I think, uh, will do a good job here. So I'm not opposed to it. I have some concerns that I think they'll address. Uh, that's why I want to maybe just keep the comment open for next month.
Yeah, we certainly will.
Um, but I, I wanted to at least let the board know that I think the people that are involved here will try to do a good job. And, uh, Mr. Beaton, uh, is the perfect gentleman. I've been his neighbor for 20 years. There isn't a request that he would deny if I asked him. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any comments or questions? How you doing?
Good on yourself.
Not too bad.
I, um, I just want to make myself, um, I'm Joe Aruder, the applicant here. And, um, where we propose this road, I don't know if the gentleman was able to see this, but we're not going to, on Fuller Street, we're not, we designed it to be away from the houses on Fuller Street. We're going to come out onto Thompson Street. We will take half the material to the left and half the material to the right to cut down. So where it's doubled, that hundred loads, you will only, there will be, no one will be passing except for there's currently one house that's been built on Fuller Street. And that house was made aware before they purchased the house that that would be, you know, we would be doing this. And ultimately, I hope everybody understands why we're, we're trying to make this, uh, cranberry bog, um, versus homes. And I hope that, um, they'll see it that way and it'll come off. There, it's in all good intention not to, um, uh, impact the neighbors, but more to help them in the long run. Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else have any comments or questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to continue this to...
Why don't we say two weeks?
Two weeks?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
7:30?
Correct.
February 10th, February 3rd, 30. And two weeks.
All right, so we have a motion to continue this hearing. I'll close the he, or continue it to February, do I have to pass the motion first? I think I do, right? We have to pass, vote on the motion, then I can continue the thing? I'm new at the continuing stuff.
Yeah, vote to continue the, uh, hearing until February 10th. When was 8 o'clock, like, like tonight?
So I have a motion and a second to continue this hearing to February 10th at 8:00 P.M. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Uh, pass unanimously. All right, continue the hearing until February 10th, 8:00 P.M.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And you'll, you'll forward the new plans to Rich Tavazinsky in your letter?
I'll go first.
All right, and the, the letter and the plans. Great, thanks.
All right, next order of business, Town Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of items. Uh, the first is a memo from our DPW Director, Chris Peck, on the snow and ice account being over budget. Uh, should come as no surprise to us, given the amount of snow and ice we've had this year. So, uh, we'll be, uh, obviously monitoring that deficit and, and we'll be taking care of it at the, uh, annual town meeting in the spring. The, um, the, the next item I, we had discussed at our last meeting, uh, some, some of the other towns' experiences with going to automated carts and I, um, I just included, uh, one towns' experiences, uh, that we received from the, the DEP, just for your information, nothing more. And then finally, a, a letter of support from our, our congressman. And then finally, a letter of support from our congressman, William Keating, for the fire departments, grant application to the Assistance to Firefighters program, where we'll be trying to get funding to upgrade our radio system, not just for the fire department, but for actually all the public safety departments. And hopefully, that will help us succeed with that grant application this year. And then just the normal town hall rentals and other approvals that we do in the office. And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anybody else have anything? Anybody in the public have anything? I would happily entertain a motion to, of course.
Of course.
Oh, I'm sorry, correspondence. Got a little ahead of myself, sorry. Correspondents. I'm just trying to get us out of here, Mike. Mr. Nolte.
Just number three, the minutes from the last library Board of Trustees. I note that the parking lot has really come into good shape. They paved it. The next step, I guess, is the landscaping, and they're looking forward to that happening in the spring. So, you know, I just, I wanted to congratulate both the board and the Friends Organization for getting that parking lot done. And that would be it.
Just on, on that subject, and to you, Charlie, if you know, were there, there were two, somebody asked me if there were tanks that were in the ground at that parking lot?
I would imagine that whatever tanks that were there were pulled. I didn't see any tank removal during this construction, so my guess is they were already gone. Usually, once you stop using the tank, you're required to remove it.
I think at one point that was a gas station.
Right, right.
Then it was a breakfast place.
Yeah, yeah, so my guess is whatever tanks were there were removed along the way.
All right. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Quell?
My correspondence? Well, sure glad to see Pat Cass is sticking around.
Yep.
I'm sure you all have some comments on that one. Cape Way Rover, so, you know, I guess the only thing that remains for Conservation Agent to follow up on, and hopefully they'll comply with her requests, is there seems to be some erosion that's leading to some runoff into a pond, so I certainly would like to see them take her suggestions of something like a silt-based, silt fence or hay bales to bring that, so, you know, that erosion stabilizes. And other than that, thank, Mr. Chairman, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that question you asked about the tanks, when they were building that parking lot at the library, you, people saw these, what looked like big tanks in there. Those were that drainage structures, as we had that big education on drainage with regards to Cumberland Farms. All the drainage on that site goes into that and infiltrates and then...
Oh, all right.
That's what people might have seen.
Is that a groundwater recharge system too?
Yeah, it's part of the groundwater recharge system.
Beautiful.
So, yeah, so, yep, that's what, a lot of people saw that.
All right. Getting to the bottom of things, I like.
Ms. Delfi.
Just number two, I'm glad to say our Conservation Agent will be remaining with us.
Yep, so am I. That's about it for me, too. All right, now I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful. All right.